Last week.
Yeah, I don't.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let our whole call show. Governing bodies all present. We have a forum. And I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Hold on a second.
It moved by Councilman Weaver. We approved the agenda. Can I have a second?
A second.
And a second by Councilwoman Hartke. Any discussion? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both the same. Passed all affirmative. Communication from citizens. No, you're later.
I have some communication.
Please, please step up, identify yourself to microphone so everybody can hear you.
My name is Bonnie Knott. I have been a member of this community for over 11 years now. I have worked, I work for this community. I have two sons that have graduated from this high school. One who worked a couple summers for the town of Shoshone. When we had a mayor that let the younger kids have jobs. Um, the other day I would, I'm here to address the council to let you know how we're, the community members are treated by our mayor in the local stores. I was in Walmart Sunday shopping, minding my own business. I go down an aisle and our local mayor is there. He said something, but I was in my own little world shopping. My boyfriend who comes up behind me and says nothing to him. He turns around us and I will not use the vulgarity he used to me, told us to F off. I turned around and asked him, are you really telling a community member to F off? The mayor of the town I live in? And he says, ma'am, that wasn't for you. That was for your husband. My boyfriend who never acknowledged him either. I don't feel our community members should be publicly humiliated. I had people staring at me wondering why this man is cussing at me. And I don't feel like that I should be humiliated or verbally abused. And as the, as you guys are his boss, I think you guys need to know how he acts in public towards the community members. I have participated in making community events. I help with community events. And I don't feel I should have been abused like that in public. I think there should be a public apology made to me and my boyfriend. Because there was no sense in that. Thank you, guys.
Okay, anything else? Please go ahead and identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Teresa Taylor. Last meeting you guys had took over the TAD money. And so my question is, is what's your plans as a governing body to disperse that money? You have a plan yet?
I have all the applications from the chamber. They brought them to my house. And I don't see why that we wouldn't disperse them just like they would.
Okay. That's one of them because back in January of this year on the meeting of 25, January 25th. Mayor Highsmith stated that the economic, he thought that economic development committee should take over that and to work with the business and the organizations and different that this first set TAD money. In August, of August 9th, 22, I asked the economic, if the economic committee had any meetings. And they hadn't at that time. And the mayor stated that they were going to have one. And I was wondering if that had.
We have had some, me and Micah on it. And a couple other people.
Mm hmm. Because that was part of my concern is that, you know, you have this economic development committee and he's not. You guys aren't using it. You've got good members on there. You've got Mike, you got Tim Davis. You got a couple of community members, Tammy and Ken Pendle. Brian Cooper, I believe he's in real estate and stuff. So I'm kind of concerned that that's not been utilized.
Oh, we're working on it.
Okay.
And we're gonna have out applications.
And is there a time?
Or January? Talking to you.
By the end of January.
Chris is on it too. Christopher Jones on it too.
Well.
He doesn't.
He's just, he's helping us get it.
Liaison.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not on the committee at all. I'm just guidance, but the plan is to have.
Right. So are you advertising when you're having your meetings?
Well, we haven't, because we've only had two meetings. We can't get nobody to, everybody to show up.
I've missed some of the opportunities.
And I've missed one and Ken's been sick and.
So hopefully this new year things will get going. Okay. Um, my other question was, what is the half cent sales tax being used for?
That would be through the economy. That's what they've been meeting on is trying to come up with the formula for a best use of the money for.
Okay, because I know there is other towns that also they have, like Riverton has their edge committee, Landers got left, Fremont County's got moved and they distribute the money.
Again, one, one thing to keep in mind, those communities have a lot more money.
It doesn't matter how.
No, no, excuse me. They, we have, they have a lot more money. One of the reasons we've held off to build a large enough kitty to try to impact to help somebody. So we're at that point, we're at that point where we have accumulated some funds where we're going to try to help. Can, could, that we're going to try to move forward. That's what the Economic Development Committee will, will be interviewing and rec, and then bring recommendations to the governing body.
That's.
On that, and that's how that is set up.
And the town gets about 36,000, right?
Um, last year we had, I want to say just under 38,000.
Okay.
Um, but that was prior to our population. So we'll probably have a little bit less this year. It's based off the distribution of sales tax.
And then my other question was, Mr. Mayor, does Wyoming Visitors Council, do they Zoom or YouTube their meetings?
Uh, typically no.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any other communication from citizens? Move forward. Okay.
Okay. I'm Leah Doyle and I wanted to talk about the additional, or I guess I should say the illegal placement of a trailer on 408 Main Street. So I own the properties 314 and 310. 310 is coming down eventually and I would like to place a daycare there. And I don't think that that trailer on that neighboring property would help my business in the future.
So I can answer that. Um, that has been noted and we are taking steps to have it rectified. It's, it's not zoned for that. It can't be there. It wasn't, it never came before the governing body to be placed there.
Okay.
It was just put there.
Okay.
And so there's. Let the.
Oh. Oh, no.
Turn your, turn your speaker off, please. Um. So that, that's going to be rectified.
Okay.
So that, that is noted and it, it, it can't be there. It's not zoned for that.
Well, that makes me feel very good.
And the government body never authorized it to be there.
Okay. And I also wanted to talk about the many vehicles on that property as well. Is there anything we could do about that to kind of clean things up? It's, there's multiple vehicles that have been sitting there since I've owned the place last October that haven't.
So if it's on private property, they can keep the vehicles there.
Okay.
Um, depending on the shape of the vehicle, they might have to be covered.
Okay.
Um.
I have a question, if you don't mind, Chris.
Yeah.
Uh, the vehicles are, are they, just to clarify, are they on the neighbor's property or your property?
Uh, we, Marshall Keller, yeah, still gotta identify because no one can hear you.
Uh, yeah, sorry, the town attorney, Marshall Keller. Uh, just asking a quick question for, for the citizen, if the vehicles are on her property or the neighbor's property?
They're on the neighboring property.
And regarding the neighboring property, uh, is someone actually residing on that property?
No.
Okay.
The trailer behind it, they are not.
The one beside it one, um, yeah, the one with the trailer.
Yeah.
Yeah, nobody lives there.
So they moved out, so. Um, but again, it's.
Right. I just didn't know.
I can. Vehicles are private property on their property and our town codes prohibit that except with certain conditions.
Okay.
So.
I feel a little better to ask.
No, it's not the only, only place that has that issue.
I know.
Chris, uh, maybe, uh, we can talk about this some other time this week. And if you can get our information, I think there may be possibilities of taking care of that.
Okay, I can certainly do that.
Thank you.
I'll have to do some research, but I think there might, might be some options.
Okay. Yeah, I, you stand by, I get some information from.
Okay.
What do you plan on opening it?
Um, it's in my five year plan. I'm young, you know, you gotta save.
No, I, I think it's a great idea.
I think a daycare would be wonderful.
Yes. If you, uh, notified the school of your intentions.
I have.
Um, yeah, I actually work for the school and I substitute. So Amber Dye and all the, you know, ups know about it and I think it's a great.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. That's always asked.
Yeah. I'm really excited.
No, that's great. I'm.
It'll take time, but. Always take time.
Yep.
I hope to have that other issue rectified by the end.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I talked to Bruce about it and she brought, she brought the idea to me last time. Any, any other communication from citizens? You're on, you're on the agenda. You're on the agenda.
Oh, no, this is this.
This, this, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, you know, I am Teresa.
Identify yourself, young lady.
I am Teresa Lindbeck. I live on Maple Street. And the corner is used a lot by the buses, right? So we really get hit with packed ice on that corner. And many a times cars go to do the right turn and you've got vehicles coming behind just swiftly. Cause they want to do a little more because they're getting closer to the end of town. And you're trying to slow down to do this turn on these big chunks ice and gutters and you seen it, you seen it. Can anybody clear that up because the buses, they're the ones actually making that large track on that corner and it's very scary. I've had people come over like this at me and there's nowhere to go.
Patrol at night. Um, it's like a sheet of glass sometimes and I'll get with Public Works and see if we get some dirt on that, some sand on that and get that.
Well, yeah, it's the lumping gutter thing. It's where the buses pull in and out. They, they whip it to the right side. So the people coming in going this way to the right side are the ones that are shooting over.
On which corner is this tree?
Right down here on Maple.
Okay, on Maple and second by the bus bar, that's where I'm.
No.
Maple and the highway. Yeah.
Okay, that, that issue I brought up with YDOT, their engineer acknowledged that there's an issue there and
that's it.
That's, that's where it ended.
Oh, that's all that ended? Well, you got that little tiny thing. It could even go in there and just do a crunch, crunch.
Get with Public Works. I think we can maybe do something to make it better.
It would be wonderful. Does it? I think somebody's going to get hurt on that corner besides maybe myself.
Water piles up there too.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think we can maybe do something to help.
Thank you. I appreciate.
Thank you, Teresa. Yeah, thanks.
I could have put, I didn't even see. I was pushing all over the area. They were loading. Didn't notice that was a spot, but everything was covered in snow.
Let's say it was kind of a bad day.
I pushed hard and made the lane way. Teresa.
Uh, any, any more communication from citizens? None being consent agenda. And I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. That's approval of the minutes November 22nd, 2022, December 1st, 2022, special meeting. Approval of the bills, November, uh, 23rd, 2022 to, to December 13th, 2022. A motion to approve.
Hold on a second.
Been moved by Councilman Weaver. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilwoman Hartke. Discussions. Any discussions? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both the same. Passed all affirmative. Uh. 2303 annexation request by Jake Z Stetler, third reading. Public hearing. Public hearing. Ordinance 23 dash 03, ordinance to annex and zone a tract of land to the town Shoshone is previously read into the record. This would be for a small area surveyed or belonging to Jake Stettler. Immediately adjacent or I guess it would be a immediately adjacent to the previously annexed land, a small square as notated in the appendix A. Kind of a motion to approve.
Make the motion.
Been moved by Councilwoman Hartke to, to approve the annexation requested by Jake Z Stettler. Uh, but 23 dash 03, you can have a second.
A second.
Been second by Councilman Weaver. To approve the annexation request by Jake Z Stettler. Any further discussion? Any further, any further discussion? Teresa. Question from the audience?
This is a public hearing, correct?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
I'd like to hand out to you guys about public hearings. I've been to this board before, to your council to discuss how public hearing can have it seen done. But you guys, I got this from a, a printout from the Wyoming Association of Municipalities of how public hearings are done. WAM has a fantastic website. It's got American Council handbook in there. It's got training videos. It's got publications. It's great for your board. And I suggest that, you know, if you haven't seen it, it's really worth looking at. Also, it's good for the, the public. So that's where I got that was from the WAM, which you guys are a member of. I wanted to see the map of this annexation.
Yeah.
Where it was. I went to the post office. I went to the senior center. I went to town hall. No place has it been public notice or public or posted. So I went on the town website and under public notice dated November 8th, only by ordinance 23 dash 03. No map also was not included there.
Did you come down here and ask me? And it was published in the newspaper?
Excuse me. It's a public hearing. State statute says that you are supposed to.
I did.
No. So Mayor Highsmith appointed only the Riverton Ranger as advertising for the town in January. Last year, councilmember Zant requested that things be posted to the town's website, Facebook, town hall, post office, senior center and library to cover all the bases and to be transparent. My question is illegality of this public hearing in accordance to state statutes 15 dash 1 dash 405B and 15 dash 1 dash 116A. And for the record, I'm not for or against annexation. That's not why I'm here for. I'm for the legal. Let the legally, how you guys are doing your public hearing. It was not posted anywhere for the public. And according to that, you're supposed to close out, out the meeting, go into public hearing. You aren't supposed to talk. You're, that's the people's time to talk and then go back into meeting. Thank you. I think this is an illegal hearing.
Is that a question from Marshall? Please.
This is suggested way to do things. It's not a state statute.
Yep. Yeah.
I'll review that specifically, but I, I remember we have gone over this multiple times round and round about publication. So you don't have a newspaper in town. However, it has been recognized that the Ranger is the official publication for the town for putting out public notices and that's been pretty well known as well as I, I do believe I've seen every single action item usually put on the agenda unless it's an emergency or special meeting, maybe that I may, may have missed, but I, I've seen all those agenda items put out for the public to be able to show up, I believe. Uh, and as well as the maps, I know I've seen those maps in meetings, uh, and sitting around on desks and hanging on the walls for anybody to look at, uh, like and just pulling off the top of my memory. I believe the publication also had a legal description of where this annex, annexation was happening. So as far as the legality of it, I believe the town has met all those, but I will review it as she has requested.
Okay, so on 15 dash 1, 116 of this Wyoming state statute on publication requirement under A, every ordinance is to be published at least once in the newspaper. Since the town does not have a newspaper, shall be posted at least 10 days in the city clerk's office or and in such other places as the governing body determines. 15 dash 1, 405 says the clerk shall give notice to the public hearing by publishing the notice at least twice in the newspaper of general circulation in the territory sought to the annexation. First notice shall be given at least 15 days prior to the notice of the public hearing. Notices shall contain local map, which includes identification, landmarks, boundaries and areas. If it's not posted anywhere in town, how's people supposed to see that?
Posted in town.
Where?
Teresa, can I, can I, can I respond? I posted it twice in the library and guess what happened to it? It was torn down. I posted the newspaper with legal description that gives you exactly the information that is requested in the state statute as required by state statute. It was posted in the post office twice and was torn down both times.
I came in here to town hall. It's not here. There's no maps there. It's not on your website. You guys want to say you want to be transparent.
I just think you're just trying to find anything you can to get a dig in.
No, I don't think so.
When we had the meeting, was it put on our overhead over there?
Time it gets poured down.
Yes. It was the first time I've ever said that.
When we had, when we had our meetings, was it on the overhead? So it'd be on Zoom too?
Yes, it's on Zoom.
Not everybody's on Zoom and stuff.
Not everybody's on the Ranger either.
State statute says.
Okay.
Jake Stettler, how's under the impression since it was, uh, adjoining land requested by the landowner, according to the county, you could actually just.
Yeah, we didn't have to do, didn't even have to advertise.
Above and beyond. The landowners requesting annexation.
Yes, yes, yes.
What the county clerk had informed me, but.
We went above and beyond.
Uh, that, that was my understanding. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's what I thought we were.
I'll show you.
Okay.
Stand by.
Thanks, Jake.
Looks good by the way, Jake.
So I'm public hearing. Any more comments?
So based on what we're, so are we good to vote or table or?
Marshall. Do you leave anything prohibitive from voting right now?
Voting, I, I'm sorry, I got lost in what just happened. I thought it was a discussion, not necessarily a vote.
We're, you know, we're, we're to the point where we would go, I guess, come out of the public, public hearing. I think we're forward. We need to vote on the third reading.
Yes.
We had a mo, we had a motion and a second and.
Yeah, I believe so.
You believe that we've met? That we've met parameters?
Yeah, you've had, you've had a public hearing for sure. So. Yeah, I believe you are well within your right to vote to go back into session.
Okay. So I'm going to call for the question or, or to the point where, where we go. Uh. Any all in favor, say aye to approve the third reading of the next annexation request by Jake Z Stettler. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both the same. Did anybody abstain or everybody point out, vote aye?
I was ready for more discussion, so.
Well, do you need more discussion?
Mike, I mean, I agree with Mrs. Taylor. Um, that, you know, I've been to the post office many times and I don't see the town agendas posted. Uh. I go to other places. I've been to senior center. I don't see them posted. I've asked previously to get them posted elsewhere. And you know, part of it is a person's perception is their reality. Reality is that from Teresa Taylor is. Reality is that from Teresa Taylor is, we're not doing our job, they're not being posted, that's her reality. And so how do we change that perception is my question.
In fact, we have been posting.
That's what we say, but.
That's what we are.
That's her reality.
Well, what can we do? I mean, people.
That's what I wanted to bring out in the discussion.
I don't know what to do on this.
So questions, why are they being torn down?
Why are? I I would think this has nothing to do right now with moving forward on this vote, I believe that's a good discussion that we should have.
I think.
I think that's a good discussion we can have and we can, we could discuss it in the, in the, in the roundtable or something. Like that's a very good discussion.
But if we're. So I'm, I'm on the same thing, I'm not opposed to. What is it that he wants to do? I don't, I have no issue with that, I feel like the. Comment that was made, if, if we are in fact doing it the right way. So if I abstained from the vote, saying, I'm just abstaining because I don't know if I'm, if we're right or wrong, if I have no issue with what. Mr. Stettler wants to do.
I agree.
So like I said, in answering, answering your question for the vote, we can discuss it at a later moment or, but I. I want Teresa to be able to be heard as well as saying.
Can I read something to you? So Wyoming State Statute fifteen one four oh three is annexation of territories. Initiated by proceedings of land by landlord's petition. Proceedings for annexation of eligible territory may be initiated by written petition filed with the clerk of the city or town to which annexation of the territory is proposed. After compliance with the following conditions and procedures. The petition is signed and dated by majority of the landlords owning a majority of the land, area sought to be annexed excluding public streets and alleys and taxes and property. We were the adjacent landowner, he was the other adjacent landowner, so there was no conflict there.
Tim Stein.
What's that?
Thompson, who was it something different?
That was the other one that we annexed. That was, that was the previous one, yep, so that condition's met. The next is a legal description or the petition contains the following detailed information. A legal description of the area sought to be annexed, which is in the legal description. A request of described territory be annexed, which was in his request. A statement that each signer is an owner of the land and description of the land within the area proposed to be annexed, which again was in all three readings was presented. And a map of the area, which was also presented to council. No signature on the petition is valid if it is dated more than one hundred and eighty days prior to the date of the filing of petition with the clerk. No person signing petition for annexation may withdraw his signature from the petition after it has been filed with the clerk. The clerk shall within ten days from the date the petition is filed, determine if petitions, petition substantially complies with this article. Which the information that I provided in your packet included all that and I attested that it was met. If the petition complies, the clerk shall certify compliance and the procedure outlined in fifteen one four oh two. Four oh five and four oh six shall then be followed, if it does not comply, the petition shall notify. So that's what he has to do as a landowner and then four oh five. Just to answer this legal question, get this out of the way, sorry for this. Try and navigate the. If after the hearing, the governing body finds that the conditions required by Wyoming fifteen one four oh two, which I just previously read, exist and that's required procedure. Have been met, it shall by ordinance annex the territory, which is what we're doing right now. Upon completion of annex procedures, the clerk of the annexed municipality shall file with the county clerk's office a map. That's when I file the map with the county clerk. After it's been decided by the council, of the area to be annexed and a copy of the ordinance approved by the governing body of the annexed municipality. Nowhere in that is the, is the public hearing required, which would be section four oh five. If somebody basically is meant for, if we're trying to annex property from somebody. That they have the right to petition us against annexing it and speak to the town council. When he's requesting it, it's no different than us, proper, we already own, we don't have to go through three readings, we don't have to do that procedures. We did this anyway just to. Try to allow public input and apparently shut us. None of this required.
So the transparency was there then?
Yes, the attempt to be there. Yeah, I apologize if they got torn down, the maps, I would always make maps available. And if I didn't publish a map, I mean, we have so much more information out there and it's, it's. It's very disingenuous to say that we're hiding stuff or we're not being forthright with the community, where we were two years ago, four years ago. It it's insulting, quite frankly, I apologize, but it is.
Is this not an ordinance that you guys are passing through?
As I just read, does not require, yes, it's ordinance, but it does not require three rings, I know you're brought to bring up, it requires three rings, that's not what this is. I just read it to you.
You pick and choose what you want out of those. It states here that it is to be posted.
It was posted.
I'm ready to vote.
So I guess I'm. So it would seem like this, this annexation is, we wouldn't say that it's different from a typical. Public notice, but it is kind of different.
Now, this is the standard if the landowner owns the land, he's requesting to be annexed in. Falls different guidelines that where we're trying to annex land in the way that, that. The landowner may or may not want to be in, because we could request to annex and. Say that some of the properties north of town, and they, and the people there may not want to be annexed in.
And that procedure would be.
Like we did last time.
It would, it would be different than what we've done.
Correct.
On this, more in line with some of the statutes perhaps that she's expressed, the process would just be. It'd be transparent, but it would just be a little bit different, I think it's been mentioned, so this has gone on this particular instance of we've done things. That we didn't have to do. But we've chosen to do that, like.
Sure, if there was people that had some objection or whatever, plenty, plenty timed to object.
Clearly it was published, I mean, you were prepared to come here, so, I mean, you had noticed.
What happened to the notice on your bulletin board here in town hall that did fall down?
Very well could have. Anyway. I see no reason to move forward with the vote. Again, I'm going to ask, all in favor. Of approving. Annexation request by Jake Z Stettler, third reading, say aye. Always the same. Motion proved all any affirmative, I believe I heard all everybody's voice. Thank you. Move on down to permit, building permit. Doyle. Please, please, yeah, anyway, we'll talk about it and if we have questions, we'll, we'll ask you. Good. You got the building permit?
Yeah, it turned up on.
Okay, good.
I didn't.
We got a building permit, we're. Sort of turning a carport in, putting some walls up and making it a better, better structure.
Just putting a wall on the front and the back of it and putting the door on the front of it.
Everything. All the, all the normal stuff we ask for, everything looks good.
I don't see any issues with it.
Kind of a motion to approve the building permits. A motion by Councilman Hart, he can have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Weaver, any, any further discussion or questions? Mr. Doyle, building.
Soon as, since the structure already exists, it's already met parameters, setbacks, et cetera, from. Previous. Previous, previous.
It was put there in nineteen ninety-four, so that's all the more I can tell you about it.
Does it have any utilities, electricity to anything?
Nothing, it's just a car, metal shelled carport, right?
I just wondered if you're, you know, doing anything like that to it, put lights in it.
Oh, maybe a plug one point in time for a freezer, but that'll be down the road, right now, I'm not even trying to do your yard. Unless Mike wants to bring a loader over for me.
I'm just doing it today.
Any, any other, any other questions? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose the same. Thank you. Presentation by Teresa Lumback.
Hi, Teresa Lumback again. I was going to do a flea market, I have a joint property on the other side of the tracks, it's twenty-seven section. Where you see the old truck in the White House there, it's right to the right on Muskrat. First piece of property parcel. So I was going to do a flea market there, but after looking into all the licenses and all the bonds and stuff, I just went. So I was looking to see if I could apply for a. Just ongoing yard sale for six months, the summertime, to see where I can go with that. And I didn't know if I needed insurance or something like that on my property because of people coming and going. I'm thinking I might, but I didn't know how much or what, and if I could get some advice on that from you guys, because. I guess Mary Ann's got one down there and I thought maybe I could do the same thing on my. Kind of like. So I'm just asking the question about getting bonded for a license to run the garage sale. Because it's going to be a six month thing instead of just on and off weekly thing, but. Six months, summertime. Is that approachable?
Firstly, I'm not aware of what we would require for that, I don't know, I don't know what we're doing with Mary Ann also.
Well, I can always get back to you guys.
But I'm thinking we can appreciate you bringing this up, but we can look at what we need. To, to move forward on that.
You're gonna call it a business? It seems like there'd be an advantage to just having a never ending yard sale. Because you as a homeowner can have, I guess, as many yard sales as you want.
No, no, if you're starting out with an idea, you want to start out at the bottom and I'm starting out at the bottom, I have a bigger idea, I just haven't approached it yet, what I want to do with that idea.
But until you get to that point, save yourself the hoops that may or may not be required.
No, no, it's better to go with advancement, I've learned in the long run that if you start with a higher chain, instead of starting at the bottom of the chain. Sometimes you avoid all the extra cost, that's a big one, extra cost.
There, there, there may be. Zoning issues, I, I mean, that's what I think Mike's alluding to.
Yeah.
There may, there may be zoning issues.
Well, it used to be called the business property and we were annexed and then we were annexed in. And we had water and sewer over there, but we don't have water and sewer over there. The people that are in that area have their own existing water and whatever they got for sewer and whatever.
This over here.
Are you, are you talking there or at your house?
Muskrat.
You're talking, you want to put it on Muskrat?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood, I thought you.
It's a business, oh heck no, no, that's all garden. No, no.
Okay, well then.
I apologize, I thought I said Muskrat.
Do something with Mabel, because that's sort of thing, you would save yourself the hassle of.
Right.
A building.
Oh, no, my, my husband and I don't agree on things, so. It's, this is my property.
Imagine that.
Yeah, I've had that for many years.
Too bad there was so much red tape on that swap meet you wanted to do a flea market.
What?
It's too bad, too bad there was so much red tape on what you're looking into and, you know, originally we're doing like a swap meet type of thing, that would have been really good.
Well, yeah. But I just wanted to see if you guys had rules and regulations, because every town does and I start with you guys and then I'll go on from there. Is that okay?
We'll look into it and see what, what, what rules and regulations we do have.
Okay, I appreciate that.
See how we can work with them.
Okay.
I think in general, I think if you were to, if you were to approach us today with a request for a business license. You said, I want to do a flea market on said addresses.
No flea market, that's very expensive right now.
Was as far, as far as the governing bodies concerned, we're not gonna, we don't require you to bring a bond from your concern. Our job is only to say, here's your permit. Have that, do what you want, and then from there, you would fall under jurisdiction of the state or.
So you want complete requirements of what I want to do over there for parking and people coming and going and signs or. I'm not sure.
That would be under zoning issue, where that land is zoned.
Yeah.
Okay, so if it's owned, commercial or zone, manufacturing or, or three, whatever. Business, all those have different parking requirements, they're found in the zone, such of the town ordinances.
Okay, because I noticed a lot of semis coming off through Muskrat Road up, up Gas Hill, so. I don't want to cause any issues there.
Is zone commercials?
Hmm?
Commercially zoned currently?
I don't know, I'm not sure. It was a business.
I don't.
It was business.
All over there, all those properties over there were business and mine was business, I don't think it's been changed. Because, well, one went to agriculture, he's over this way. And the other one has its well thing, and then the other piece of property was the train thing.
That was called industrial, which was a category than everything else.
Yeah, but they all started out as business, because we own the land and I remember they were all business. Each one changed their statute, so I didn't change mine and that's why I'm wondering if I still am zone business. Because she's showing was the one that gave us our zoning.
I, it's not shown on this map that it's zoned, it's zoned at all.
Really?
But I, I can remember, I lived here long enough, I can remember when it was business there.
Yeah.
Sure do, but I don't see on that map any zoning spot.
Sometimes I wonder if letters get missed. Because when.
I don't know, we'll, we'll research it.
It's been a lot of years, okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
And thank you for your time, can I call home now?
If you, if you, well, yes. We won't hold you hostage.
Can I ask you, can I ask you a real quick question before you go, just, I've got the county map here. This might be helpful for you, which parcel, is it this parcel right here?
No. I'm on the front by Muskrat Road.
So, this parcel here.
It disappeared.
So that's Big Horn Divide.
Oh, I'm the bigger one, this is the little one, that's me.
So this one right here?
Yes.
From Roman?
Yeah.
So it's zone commercial.
Well, it's zone commercial, the county, that has nothing to do with how the city zones it.
Mike, so I guess according to, so I guess according to what it says on that.
There, there's probably tax in it as commercial, but it could be taxed as commercial. But not zone commercial in the city limits.
Okay, two different things.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Because they make more money, maybe they make more money on the zone that commercial instead of, yeah. Okay, but yeah. Now that's, it took me a while to figure that out, but I I've just discovered that has, that, that happens here.
Oh, okay, so there's a, no way I can get commercial zone?
There is.
Right, I think.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Okay.
You can.
Another meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
We can't do it today.
Okay, thank you very much.
But it can be done.
Okay, thank you very much.
Very good. New business, I believe that's where we're at. Twenty twenty-three lease agreements.
So this will be for the. Mayor has authority to sign the lease agreements for the nine leases listed. At the. At the previous rates for last year. Actually, she's showing senior center, that's a five-year lease that one is just carried on, so it's already. So I guess.
Somebody else wanted to apply for one of these, do they have to, how does that look out?
Ever had that for, like, the hanger? Like you're talking about the airport hangers?
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know, you know, someone's baking ground with it, like, where they graze their cows type thing, if another farmer said.
Contact us, and then I bring it before the council to decide what the terms would be.
But if it's already has, it's already under.
It was already leased, and yeah, then.
That's up on one-year lease, so you have to wait till leases expire.
And then.
So somebody wanted this.
Yeah.
In twenty twenty-three, or they had to put in a, an petition to say, I'd like, I'd like a shot at this. Property that's under lease agreement right now, and then we say, okay.
That'd be a governing body decision, which one to do or how that would look, or if it would be half and half or something to that effect, but. Yeah, as long as when the lease expires, before it expires, they wanted that same land, and they wanted to do a lease, then they would have to contact town hall, and then. Coming for the council petition, I guess. But these are just pre-existing ones that are carried over year, year, year. I guess that would be. The avenue to go prior to the renewal of these leases, if they wanted to get the same land for grazing, for example. They would have to. Petition the council. That'd be council's decision.
And none of this information is published prior to this discussion?
The lease stuff?
Yes.
No.
So. That goes back to my point, you know, if somebody wants that lease. And they don't know about it. That's what I'm saying. Should this be published? And advertised saying, you know.
I don't think it's ever done. I mean.
Uh, that's just, I, I know that.
I'd have to see if there's any, uh.
Any precedent?
Precedent, and I'd also have to see if there's any, uh. Personal information or any laws that would. Confidentiality stuff, and I talked to the attorney on that one.
I mean, I can see where it could be obnoxious, and someone who built a plane or airplane hangar, and now suddenly I got a bid against. Somebody else wants my hangar, do I have to remove the my hangar so you guys can have your dirt back, Kurt?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I'm thinking parallel lines is what happens if somebody wants a different BLM lease from some rancher. And that has happened.
And that adds, that adds petition, whatever authority that has authority over it, prior to. Yeah, you know, why the lease is in effect, when it has expired, that way they get, are given.
Right.
Fair consideration in before a lease is just granted out. It still comes before the governing bodies. As far as, uh, we could publish out what lands we have leased. I mean, that's something we could do, not necessarily identifying a landowner, but use the leases.
Right, not do that for life.
That's nothing to be identified, and if you had interest in that, then you'd still go through the same procedures to contact town hall. I think that's something that's easy.
Yeah, so kinda like in lieu of that, is there more ground that the town has that could lease, that could generate revenue for the town?
We have a lot of, we have a lot of property we could throw out there to lease out if we, you know.
Go, and if, if it was something like that was published, it'd be just for your information, the following, we're renewing. Following leases. The following properties are vacant. If anybody had interest or.
Yeah, like, yeah, I mean, like the airport hangers, if you had vacant hangers, so we could say if, if you wanted a hangar.
Or if there was another eighty acres someplace, I mean, there's nothing where there is, but. Dirt type of stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's very doable.
And I wouldn't wanna turn into bidding type where like, well, I've, they've been doing this, well, I would like to put my cow there.
Well, those are decisions you get to make.
Well, they run a hundred cows there. Well, I want my cow.
And I don't know if that would involve a public hearing or anything like that, because it's public land. I, I'd have to get with the town attorney and figure that.
Public funds.
And public funds.
Yeah, those are things that we, you know, look at, discuss in the future. I make a motion, we approve the following leases, Charles and Nancy Herbst, Dave Maddox, Jenna Washington. Just Shawnee Activities Association, the Credit Union, Randy A, Al Kenyon, and Gary Herbst.
My second.
Been moved by Councilman Zan, second by Councilman Weaver, that we approve the twenty twenty-three lease agreements. As mentioned. A, uh, further discussion. None being all favors say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same. Motion passed on the affirmative. We go down next to expenditures.
Order and pizza?
I think when they called five times, it's probably important.
Pizza's a big decision.
Here, we, we are at expenditures.
So I'll just carry on from, you know. Clerk and stuff, but this is kind of carrying on, so. Um. When we, uh, moved on with the appeal of the tax bill. Or the tax bill we received, appealing that, it was noted at the time that if we did proceed. Beyond the first level, which was the county, um, that there'd be extra expenses and legal fees. That would be incurred, and so this is gonna. Require a budget increase in that attorney. Fees as we go through the process. I don't, Marshall's on call now, I believe we have the state, uh. Board of Equalization hearing coming up. Sometime here soon. Marshall?
Yeah, so, uh, regarding the Board of Equalization, there was, th- this is one that was done in writing, this appeal. And so, the, uh. Yeah, we filed our brief, and, uh, I'm not, I don't know if, uh, Joel sent that out to everybody, but I did provide it to the town. That's been submitted timely, and now we're waiting on the county to file their reply, which is due on Friday. And then after that, then at some point, the, uh, Board of Equalization is gonna review the briefs and the record and make a decision, and at that point. Either the county is going to appeal to District Court. Or I'm gonna appeal to District Court, depending on which way it comes out.
And so that's what that was, the contract and services. Um, as you know, we had to contract a, uh. Contractor for our sewer certification, uh, which we expect to last until probably the end of the year, June. Our budget year, um, so that budget increases under contract and services. Uh, to pay for that additional expense of having a contracted employee, so I think that's about six hundred dollars a month. The library is just a budget reset, um. When I finalized the budget, I did not. Add in the pay raise for the library, um. Personnel, and so that is a reset on that, just to bounce it out. To what it should be. And the municipal court, the office supplies, um, order has requested a new computer. Or clerk and the judge both, and that is the one computer we have never replaced. It's not functioning very well, so that is what that increase is to govern. Uh, which leaves, uh, more budget. If all approved, uh, two thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars, uh, available. Revenue. Access revenue, I guess.
Anticipated revenue.
Well, revenue versus expenditures.
Right, okay.
So it does not necessitate a raise in, uh, revenues or. Any, anything of that nature, since we under budgeted our expenditures.
So the motion you're looking for, Chris, here is to. Raise these budget items, budget increase as presented.
Correct.
And have a motion to do so.
Make a motion to approve the. Budget increase.
To the treasurer to increase.
Been moved by Councilman. They make that we, that we approved the budget, have agreed to have the treasurer. Uh, increased the, the, the budget as presented. Line items as presented. Have a second.
Second.
Been second by Councilwoman Hardkey. Any further discussion? None being all favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose the same. On the affirmative. Employee bonus. We, we discussed, we discussed that. In a previous meeting, right?
Your mayor's.
Small mayor's report, okay, yeah, round table. I believe we suggested. Uh, five hundred dollar Christmas bonus for all the full-time employees and the part-time employees, uh, two hundred fifty dollar Christmas. Is that correct? Can I get a motion to approve that? Those two bonuses?
I'll make the motion to approve the bonuses.
Been moved by Councilman Weaver, can have a second.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Hardkey, discussion. You're gonna make sure the community, so we're that governing body is not including in this bonus. Correct, this is, we're not employees. That's all I just wanna make sure the community is aware of that. Yeah, yeah, we are, we are, we are not a governing body, councilman and mayor, none of us are employees of the, of the municipality.
You're slaves, right?
Well, can we redo that? So there is some. Maybe you could for a different term.
But anyway. Any, any further, we, we talked about quite a bit. In the roundtable, any other further, further discussion about that? Yeah. None being all favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose the same. Police report.
Unfortunately, I was on the agenda, and I did not have time. To get that presented, I apologize. As far as the numbers go for the month, I will say that our calls were down. Um, last I checked, about five calls from last year. Um, juvenile problems have. Been about the same, uh, we've got a few issues that we're dealing with. Controlled substance is something that we're focused on right now, that is becoming more of a problem. Schools had some reports of things as well, so that is, uh. Our main focus right now, in the store times, is trying to enforce curfew, which the cold weather has really helped with kids being outside, apparently at two below, they don't. Three o'clock in the morning, but, um, there's still some issues that are going on, uh, related to controlled substance, and, uh. That is our main focus area right now. Mainly among juveniles.
By controlled substance. That. What?
Things that the federal government had deemed to be. Of the least use without proper medical supervision. Marijuana is the base.
Well, that's good news. That's good for the public to know. And better than other.
Yeah.
Other choice things.
This, yeah, um, we've had some overdoses here in the community as well, not necessarily from marijuana, but from other. Other substances, um, here in the last couple of months, so it's something that we're turning our attention to. We're still doing traffic, of course, but. Um, you'll probably see a little bit more activity in certain areas at certain times of the day.
Until growing is better than cooking, so.
I don't know who you've been talking to, but.
Just what I learned on Netflix.
What you were breaking bad and.
How to catch a smuggler.
Yeah, so it's, unfortunately, it's not just here, it's, it's everywhere. It's just getting worse, but we're, we're trying to do what we can to address it.
But I mean that as far as at least public knowing that versus, but we, we know that when you get into the harder cooked substances. Versus.
We had that last year, if you remember, we had, I don't know, six or seven arrests in five-day period at the motel when it was open. I mean, there, uh. Those are different substances, and thankfully, those are gone for now that I'm aware of, but. Um, thirteen-year-old smoking marijuana is not healthy, it's not good, and.
Good friend. Any other questions for Chris? None being, let's go to the roundtable. Mike, do you have anything you'd like to bring up? Oh.
I've had my question answered already.
Okay, thank you, yeah. Tammy?
I just wanna say it looks really nice coming into town with Tim's trailer gone, that all being tore down, that looks really nice.
Yeah, we should get the bill for that very soon.
But it does look nice.
Yeah, that was, that was a big step forward, I think.
Yeah, and I'm sure that helped him a lot.
Yeah, it helped the community a lot.
Right.
Anything else?
No.
Well, I had compliments on the building by the park being torn down. Lots of people were happy to see that go. And I've noticed that the potholes have been being filled in. With some, that black top that cold, and that's made a huge difference. I forgot about one of the holes.
Just dirty ice, that's not.
I'll take it.
Yes.
I'll take it.
Deceptive.
Good till spring.
Just spray paint it black and they'll leave it. But I forgot about one of the holes, I hit it and it wouldn't there. So.
I thought snow today, one of those big holes that I kept waiting for to just. Tacked right in, nice ice.
Think that's it, I swung in and took a peek at that house that Covenant Builders has redone.
Mm-hmm.
That's looking really good, that's gonna help the community, that's.
Yes.
Some of the people.
Another nice home.
Notified a couple people at the school, just in case there's a new teacher, it's looking for a home, and there's another home right across the street, that's a pretty nice home, that's for sale also, so. That's really about it, but yeah, I just, I noticed that was a real pleasant on the ice.
I got, I got a few things, I would, one thing I'd like to bring, bring up, we, uh. Made the, the, who got shortlisted on the, our, our grant application for. The trailhead, what used. The trailhead, what used to be Rockport for the heritage trail, we got shortlisted on that. That's one of the things, we got notified yesterday and we're shortlisted, we gotta have our application finished by Friday. We gotta put in another application, we've been working on that, spending a lot of time, and I've had Chris and Kim both involved and. Doing with that, Kathy, we're, we're all pitching in, working on that, try to make sure we get that done in time, that'll be. You know, I think, good, a good addition. Talked to some of the state park people, and they're pretty excited that this. That'll go through, so we don't have any guarantee that we're going to get, get, it was a four hundred thousand dollar, ninety, ten grand. We don't have any. We're not guaranteed, at least we're in, in, in the shortlist and with the, with, on the, the end of it, so. That was, that, that's a good thing. Got, got some compliments, I was up at a meeting in DuBois, got compliments from a couple DuBois citizens on the fine job. Our police department doesn't, she's showing me, and how they're out protecting, one of them had even received a speeding ticket, he said he. He got a sort of a mental lapse, he came in a little too fast, but that, they, they really ask how we did it. And everything, and it will just takes a will and get the right personnel work that works great, but there was.
Honestly, at this point, I'm afraid of speeders.
But, but anyway, but I had two different, I was up there for congressional state senator representative up there and. And I was also up there discussing with the mayor of DuBois on, on issues, but. However, very complimentary of, you know, that our, our PDs, they were complaining in DuBois, sometimes they get some speeders going through and. And causes a hazard for the people, that mean local citizens and. They recognize that, that's, they don't look at us as a speed trap, they look at our police department protecting our city, our citizens, which they are. So that was, that was refreshing, I liked the compliment, Chris, and, and everybody that helped him on. On what they did down at our Newtown Plaza, and with the decoration, got, got some. Pretty good comments on that, talking to someone that went through going to Casper. And there was not much there, and when they came back, they said, boy, it looked really, really good, so that's. Another, another good thing that's kind of. Kind of moving, moving forward in the, in the right direction that we need to, can continue to do. Mike Quidler, who we hired as our new director of public works, he's getting acclimated. And our, our public works department is moving forward with Mike Letch and. And Bart Roman are all doing a, I believe, a real good job, and we're, I think, we're moving forward. Doing, doing, doing good things.
I saw one more thing, actually.
Please do.
Um, I forgot to mention that I spoke with Tyler Crim, the owner of Large Ranch. Over towards Armento, and he comes through town a lot, and he was telling me about the middle of last week. That he'd noticed a big, huge improvement on the looks of our town, and he said to keep up the good work, townsfolk know that better.
It's taken a lot of hard work by, by many people, or, or, we're, we're gaining on that. We are. You know. Moving forward, still springtime, we're, we're hoping to be breaking, breaking down ground on our. Our sewer, West Side Sewer. We're, we're looking at everything else to make that, that project. We identified five projects that in the next two years, it could be shovel, shovel ready, I think we already brought that up on the last meeting, so. I believe that's about all I, all I have to. Have to bring, one thing I would like, this is probably your last council meeting, if this go around. Would like to thank you for all that you've done to help Shishomi, and always putting Shishomi first. And, and being a warrior to do what's, what's right for the town and. Do, do really appreciate that as many citizens. Thank you for your four years.
No, thank you, I appreciate that, you said it's a lot of fun in a lot of ways and. A lot of not fun in some ways, but I, I do plan on staying involved. Trying to keep things going through.
Yep, I, I, I will talk to you and, and ask and buy some projects and that. I know you're going to be off the council, but you're still in Shishomi, and I know you still care about Shishomi, and I know you want to stay involved. And you need to do what's best for Bo Weaver, and I respect that, and I appreciate your time. That you, you put here.
Here's our appreciation, your bonus check. It's his last council check, I mean.
Council, the council get paid once a year in Shishomi, they get one check a year, so, but anyway. Yep. There's probably something else I forgot, but I've talked long enough.
We're good.
Yeah, but anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I forgot something very much.
Please, bring it up, I appreciate.
This is from Michelle Ramble, the director of the record.
Oh, yes, please.
She's asked me to read this letter, have it put into the minutes.
Yes, thank you.
Dear town council and mayor, we would like to recognize the special thanks to our town-appointed board members, Christie. Percy Baker and Kenny Kundal, we're thankful for their dedication and commitment, all to our board and to the community. Serving on the board is not a small or easy undertaking, they've done a fantastic job, considering the community's best. Considering the community's best interests on all topics, and working together with other Shishanti Recreation Districts. Number twenty-four board members and staff to create recreation opportunities for our community. As this year ends and the new begins, a better time to recognize our dedicated board members for their service. And we look forward to continue to work for our town-appointed members, new, from the entire. Board, Merry Christmas and many blessings for the New Year, signed, Michelle Ramble.
Thank you, Bob, because I forgot that. Yeah, please go ahead.
Sorry, I was very nervous doing this because this is not normal, and I mean no disrespect to the, to the council. But it should be to you guys, to be, to be a privilege that we hold you guys at such a high standard. Because you guys chose this position, we didn't ask. And to, you know, how you treat your community members in public, I felt two inches high when he verbally abused me. So as you're guys, being his boss, might want to remind him how he should act in public, please. This is from my heart, I don't come here, I, you know, like I said, I participate. I've helped put together community dinners and stuff at the main parks. So please, I hope you guys take this to heart, as me being a community member, I've been here for over eleven years, I vote. I take care of my property, I work for the school district, so please.
Anybody have anything else? Then being, have a motion to adjourn. So move.
Second.
Been moved by councilman Zan, seconded by councilman Weaver that we adjourn, any further discussion? None being. During eight nineteen P M.
That's my new light station right there.
Hey, Bob, I changed the subject, two days ago. He had a vehicle, so I was interested in purchasing one of my chips. And so he didn't think I was interested in sold the vehicle, and when I checked that message, you were on it. I was not ignoring you, and I completely a hundred percent apologize, I was not ignoring you. I know, but I didn't. I just didn't want you to think I was ignoring you, because that was not the case, that's why I wanted to make sure I apologize to you.
That's fine, that's, that's fine, no problem. So that's what the chamber member gave me, and I said, I'm giving to you, because that's going to be your new line item. Yeah, that's right. I mean, well, you're be taking this shit with that money, we have a line item, whatever it is, a thousand dollars. That's the best way to describe it. We're still alive.